Jefferson County Council.
Yes.
And one of the two resolution descriptions?
Uh? It says in there it's attached.
No, I have a little amount of two on the last.
The next resolution will go first. Okay, so the last but not least resolution, Resolution twenty-two dash oh-two-nine. Jefferson Township Wood Trustees appoint Kenneth B. Smith, Jr. as our Road and Cemetery Supervisor. I had an interview with this gentleman. He did apply for the job and I was very well impressed. He's grown up in Jefferson Township and I believe that he would take a lot of pride in taking care of our community. Very well mechanically inclined and we've been lacking that for a while in the department. And I'm very excited about him coming on board and helping us, helping us improve our township. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh-two-nine.
A second, a moment. A second in motion.
Tracy, we have a roll call, please.
Jefferson County Council.
Yes.
Jefferson, yes.
Motion carries.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, I, I.
I don't mean to put you on.
I'm Kenneth Smith. I'm grateful for this opportunity to come serve in the area where I grew up at. I was born and raised out here and I grew up on Ten Shaw, now Mount Autrum. I don't like what's going on, but I'm here to assist and save the township money in any way I can. I'm very mechanically inclined and I'm ready to get started.
Okay.
Trustees, would you help me to run these two new employees through HR, IT session to get their email and all the personnel files set up?
Yes, yes.
The two new?
The two new.
Oh, yes, yes.
Both of them says in there, both of them will give us a date. They both have got, give notice someplace. Neither one of them started tomorrow. It'll be sometime after Monday, but they will, I'll give some contact information and they'll get to know you.
Right.
Departmental reports, I forgot to put on the agenda, but it is the first of the month and they are due. I'm sorry about that. All right, Department, you want to go first? Sorry about that.
Again, monthly reports for February, March. Run wise, we had a hundred and two EMS runs, sixteen fire runs, eight auto accidents, eight alarms. We received mutual aid from Trotwood one time. And. Eleven Dayton and, let's see, Farmersville. In March, we had a hundred and sixteen EMS runs, twenty-three fire runs, one fire investigation, eight auto accidents, two alarms. Mutual aid to Trotwood once and we received mutual aid from Trotwood twice, Dayton twice, Farmersville once. Mountain Valley Fire District once, Rain once, and West Herald once, and we had one fire fatality. We done training with Farmersville at a house that they had acquired on Saturday. We got in search and rescue. And Sunday, we got a life burned. We had a total of twenty people there, both days. For a total of both days. And we're off and running for April.
Do you want to talk about the car seat giveaway?
Yeah, that's this Saturday.
The ninth, April ninth, yeah.
From one to four. Anybody that lives in Jefferson that has a child that requires a car seat can come to Station Sixty at Business Park in West Third Street. And you will receive a free one. Compliments of premier. And they will show you how to properly install them to keep your kids safe. But it's only for residents of Jefferson Township. This makes what, the third program? Third program with it on.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes. Captain, please.
Not to stand next to that, if you don't mind. If you have a car seat that you're running, that's, you've been running with for quite a while, check them because they do expire. There's an expiration date on those car seats. It's not, you know, doesn't have to be involved in an accident for it to be beyond its useful life. So the, the heat of sitting in cars day in and day out wears and tears on plastics and, you know, you could be setting something up for failure. You know, if it's too old and beyond that manufacturer's date. So check that definitely.
I have a question. Does that include booster seats?
Yes.
Yes, all, all that should have a stamp. Now, the, the booster seats, they're designed to raise the child up and put them in proxy. They're not as stringent, but the ones that are actually used to restrain a child, those all, I think they're about, most of them are about five or six years from the date of manufacture that they expire.
And it's a, it's a flyer out there. I posted it right there over the sign sheet. So if you want to take a picture of it so you, you'll have it. And this one, yes, both, both are on, you haven't stopped on the second thing, so.
Overall, for the month of February, our crime was up thirty-three percent, which was twenty-four additional instances over February of twenty-one. Our Part One violent crime remaining the same. There was no increase or decrease. Part One property crimes accounted for sixteen percent plus three. Part Two violent crime decreased by seventeen percent minus four. And then the Part Two property crimes increased by forty-four percent, which was four additional there. There's a graphic in there that kind of, I, I put in there this month. I'm playing with this software a little bit, trying to put it into a useful format. But those numbers of calls are kind of illustrated on that map. You can kind of see the, the hotspots, which I cover, you know, usually every month along Third Street, along Route Four. So you can actually see a graphical representation of them there. That will show you where the bulk of the calls occurred. We continue to take community concerns on speed complaints in various locations throughout the township. We are, we are deploying that speed trailers daily. Probably going to be needing some new wheels for it here soon, but if you don't see it in your neighborhood and it's been a minute, you know, feel free to call us. We'll, we'll make sure it's on the schedule soon or, you know, get it back out there. But we are trying to rotate that through all the neighborhoods in the community. So you will see that out all throughout the summer. Our traffic, we investigated eleven traffic crashes for the month of February. That's two additional compared to February of last year. Five of those were property damage, four minor injury, and seven people claimed injury out of those. And we had two serious injury crashes with two people sustaining serious injury. One hit and run. No pedestrians were struck. So we, we dodged that this month and none of the crashes involved impaired driving. Wednesdays were our busiest day of the month with three crashes. Failure to maintain reasonable control was the most common causative factor, which accounted for three crashes. And US Thirty-five was the most prevalent roadway accounting for three crashes. Other crashes occurred on various roadways throughout the township. The, we devoted eighteen hours of high-visibility enforcement overtime, traffic enforcement strictly to Jefferson during the month of February. And then totaled between that and regular patrol that deputies were on, they made seventy-four traffic stops and issued thirty-four citations. Four of those were driving under suspension, seven speeds, a seatbelt violation, nine other moving violations, and eleven non-moving violations. And we had two, two OVI drivers that we removed from the roadway. Deputies issued forty-six traffic-related warnings and again, eighteen hours of dedicated HVO traffic enforcement. We had one new dumping complaint for Jefferson Township in February. Six hundred and twenty-two total calls for service, generated a hundred and sixty-one reports. Thirty-three calls for forensic services out here, made thirteen felony arrests, three misdemeanor arrests, again, seventy-four traffic stops. They logged three hundred and ninety-two preventive patrols addressing areas that have been complaints throughout the township. Handled two-nine-one-one calls, thirty alarm complaints, three animal complaints, three Viennese, five burglaries, ten domestics. No drug complaints called in for February, none. And that includes, that includes dispatch and that includes Crime Stoppers. Conducted twenty-five field interviews, responded to eight fights, continued to check the bars. We checked on twenty-three suspicious situations and eighteen welfare checks. We had one weapons complaint. In the spirit of working together, it's imperative we get these calls. Some crimes, you know, and, and you may have called ten times, but if it's happening and it's something new or it's, it's a complaint that you had and is now occurring as you look out your front window, you got to call that in. Some of these calls require, you know, deputies to witness offenses. You know, the ORC has a very specific list of what deputies can arrest for or take enforcement on without witnessing. So a lot of things in the misdemeanor realm, we're going to have to see occur. So we need to have those calls. And we may not get them the first five times, but the sixth time we roll up, we may witness it in action. And that's what we need. Some of these types of crimes, they require us to establish patterns. And then, once we establish patterns and ongoing conduct, we may be able to say, hey, we didn't witness this, but we now have enough of ongoing activity, enough complaints with a little bit of information to add here and there that we may be able to, to push something through with a search warrant or something of that effect. It's, it's not as easy as it looks on TV. It's a lot of work. And if you want to make something stick and not have them standing back out on the, the corner before you make it from the jail back to the township, you got to put the work into it to make it go through the court. Otherwise, they're just, you know, that's where we get the comments that, you know, I own this township or this and that. That's where that comes from. So a lot of it isn't going to be fast resolved. It's going to take a lot of effort. And it's going to take the effort of the sheriff's office, the township, and the citizens that live here. So make the calls. We will do everything in our power, even if it's as simple as documenting it. And when I come in on Monday mornings, first thing I do is I sit down and go through the last week's calls. So I can look up every dispatch that a deputy went on in this township. I can look up what they went on in Phillipsburg. But when I pull, when I start to pull stats for my weekly meetings and things, I go back and I look through those calls for service. I look at those patterns. And then if I see something I don't like, I'll go ask the supervisors and I'll expect them to get an answer from a deputy. But if it's not there, it's not going to be on my radar. And as, as the district commander, I'm kind of the one that sets things in motion. I'm the one that reaches down to the supervisors and say, hey, we've got something going on over here. We've had three calls to the same address. We've had ten calls to the same address. So I'm the one that's pushing that directive for the patrol. So I need that input from the community. And, you know, drug complaints, zero. If it's in progress, if you're looking out your window, if you live next to a drug house and you're looking out your window watching a drug deal go down, call dispatch. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, call two-two stop. You can rename it, remain anonymous there and provide the information. That goes to Crime Stoppers. That information goes to our task forces. That goes to the majors. That goes to me. And we know what's going, you know, we know we've got an issue. We know we've got a complaint there. And if we start to get those tips with license plates, names, times, you know, days of the week, that gives us something to work with. Don't, don't, don't save it for a monthly meeting. Call it in. Because it's, if it's happening in real time, sometimes we can deal with it in real time. Sometimes it doesn't look like we're dealing with it, but it's actually being dealt with on a detective level.
And that's the two-two-two stop.
Two-two-two, two-two-two stop. You can call in drug tips all day long and remain anonymous. Now, if you see something that's happening live and you want a deputy to respond immediately, you need to call two-two-five-helps or if it's an emergency, nine-one-one, and they will dispatch a deputy out to that area.
Two-two-five-help.
I thought two-two-five-help was just for dumping.
Two-two-five-help is the dispatch center and they dispatch the, for the environmental crimes. That is also where you would call to report illegal dumping. But yeah, I, I look at that stuff on a weekly and then I, when I sit down to do these reports, I pull those stats monthly. So when, when I see no drug complaints came in for the entire month, and I know we got some because I've got some addresses on a list, but that tells me it's cooling off, maybe things are, the, the, the deputy patrols are shutting things down a little bit or it's getting too hot for, for the dope deal. So zero is going to fall off the radar a little bit and we're going to move on to the next hot topic. So you got to keep that stuff coming in and keep it on the board so that it can be, you know, pushed on to deputies. I put things on a daily that we have. It's sent out to every car in the county. That's the sheriff's office car. Any car with the sheriff's office can pull it up. So our Jefferson cars can see it. If we've got a west car, a county car that's coming into the township to do some things, they can see it. So they know where the hot spots are. It's in real time. So we've been using that pretty, uh, we've been strictly using that on a regular basis for the last two months. And that's putting that information in their hands. And I may just look at those, those, those calls that came in and I may make a entry onto that daily for those deputies based on that. But if it's not there, I, I'm not going to know to make that. So call, call every time you see it. You know, it's, it's very beneficial for us when we have somebody that we can make contact with and ask questions. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, I, I understand, but we at least need to get a car into the area to take a look. So, and you know, we'll, we'll do what we can. But it's going to take, it's going to take more than just the Jefferson Township deputy or, you know, a zoning officer. We're going to have to get help from the community.
Jefferson County Council. How many cars do you have in the township at one time right now?
We have one contract Jefferson Township car per shift. So you have day shift, which runs, our, our roll calls are at seven-thirty in the morning and runs until four o'clock in the afternoon, you have a car. And then at four o'clock until eleven-thirty, you have another car. We do have a floater car in there. When that car is working, we split that car between third watch and midnights to deal with some of the busier call load times. And then when you get to midnight, you've got one car. But typically, just consider it one car and then you've got a bonus in there. So total, total deputies on the road in Jefferson Township, and this includes days off, is five. And then you have a detective that follows up on the cases. So with, with days off and relief schedules and things, you come down to one car per shift. And then we have, you know, when we need to back up that Jefferson car, we send in a county car to do that. We don't, you know, we're not, we're not leaving them alone. But you know, that car may be coming from Phillipsburg. That car may be coming from, you know, Preble County Line. So, but we do, you know, we do, you will see, you will see, especially on nights when something big happens, you're going to see a significant sheriff presence in the township. You know, we, we get the cars there, but for the actual patrol purposes, you have a car.
I have a question. You're talking about you have to see it before you can actually, if you have like your iPad that is date stamped, timestamped, and you can get the activity on there, does that constitute the officer being able to see it?
I'm fairly comfortable with getting a copy of that and submitting a summons to the court for that individual. So yes, we can take action with video footage. It's just some of the, some of the, you know, misdemeanors of violence we can arrest for without a warrant. There's a few others. And then other, everything else is typically a felony. A lot of the lower-level misdemeanors, even to issue a citation. Like, I can't write a citation for speed unless I see speed. You know, we can do investigative things to prove crime. You know, fingerprints come back on, you know, thefts and things like that. We can, but that's a warrant arrest, not a warrantless arrest or enforcement. So, but yeah, if, if you have something on video that clearly depicts what's going on and we can identify that individual, we can summon somebody into court on that. Depending on what it is, you know, they still may be able to make a physical arrest on it. It just depends on the crime.
Okay, so I don't live there, but I still, I have a question. So what if you, what if you see multiple individuals leaving and coming and going? And you're just, and you're taping activity at the house. Would that be, would that be something that could be given to you as proof?
It can be, it can be used as a tool in totality of circumstances, but activity is not illegal.
Right.
So you have to be able to determine and point something toward what type of activity it is. Now, if they're all walking out of, you know, the house with crack pipes, per se, that's activity with a crime.
That would be great.
That would be great. But, but, but that's not, that's not typically how it goes. Now, sometimes, but yeah, you know, that's useful in, hey, listen, I got this house, traffic in and out on foot all hours of the day, cars in and out all hours of the day. They're staying for two and a half minutes. You know, a, a female's running out, leaning in the window, and then they're gone. We know what that's leading to, but it's going to take.
Defensive proof.
It's not definitive proof of a crime, so we have to build off of that.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about the event that the sheriff department is going to be putting on?
The Easter egg? Yep. The, the Jefferson Township Easter egg hunt is going to be held over at Arthur Fisher Park on the sixteenth. You'll have to help me out. What are we running at, eleven?
Uh, it's on there on the wall.
I think we're running at nine to eleven, but there's, there's flyers coming out on the website, one over here. And, but that'll be Saturday, the sixteenth, rain or shine, in Arthur Fisher Park. And I think we're actually doing the full Easter egg hunt this year, not the drive-through thing that we did for COVID. So it should be a little bit more normal. So if you got little ones, bring them out.
Yeah, it's from eleven to noon. And I will say, please be there about ten-thirty.
Nine o'clock, so.
Those little clicker's fly around there. And it's a really big event. The sheriff department does a really good job with that. And I think the fire department outside with that as well.
Only other thing I have is does anybody have anything else for the fire department?
I'd like to. Mike, I'd like to hear something else.
Yes.
I want to thank Andy and his deputies and investigators for the job they do for our department. The protection they give us at a couple scenes there within the last few months. And they, they do a fantastic job for the township.
Thank you.
Always.
I have a question.
What'd you say?
What's up with the fuzz? I haven't seen you in a while.
I'm trying to be more like you.
Okay, well, next we're going to do the, I'm going to do two reports into one. We'll do the road reports as I look at roads. And thank goodness I'll be doing a little bit less of that. And I'll do my trustee report at the same time. So shortly after our last meeting, the road department, we fixed a washout on Forty. It started off as a small little washout. It had barrels around it. For probably a couple of months, and we had nasty rain. And a half of the road got washed out. And I was really happy in fact that just knowing what you're doing. And we had that material in the yard. We didn't have to buy squat to do that. We had material left over, jobs. We had a piece of limestone that was probably three foot by three foot by three foot. In the back though, we had a hard time picking it up, putting it in the dump truck. We got that out of sight, put that in front like a head wall. And just kind of know what you're doing. And I'd be highly surprised if I get washed out again. So we started off with those big rocks there and then put twos down and then put some fifty-sevens in there. And then we had some kind of dirty three oh four to be put in there. And we'll get back and put asphalt on that. We are going to do some asphalt, hot asphalt patching this summer and get these roads, it's tired of using cold patch. And cold patch will be a thing of winter, winter only. And we got that small dump truck fired up, got it started. And we'll be using that and we will be making some nice road repairs. But I'm very happy in the fact that we have a new road superintendent. We rehired a guy who worked for us a couple of years ago, was a maintenance guy. And part of my campaign was to stop paying other people to do what we do ourselves. On the farm, I have a hard time paying somebody else, something to do myself. I need to have my roof done, but I'm over sixty years old and I don't want to get on that roof. It's a safety issue. So I did hire somebody to put new roof on my house. But generally, I mean, I changed, I do maintenance on my vehicles. I restored the wooden one vehicle with help of friends. And I want to run this township like I do my own house. You can live with any means. You can fix things yourselves. And that's what we're going to do in Jefferson Township. And we will make Jefferson Township better. That's all I got.
That's fine. I, I've seen lots of phone calls and I received a video of some activity on Vanguard. Are you aware of that situation? It's the only double house there. And the video was cars lined up down the street and it is suspected to be an after-hours place. I believe the police was called there because there were cars lined up in Mountain Street and they were out, you can hear on the video. Them out there cussing and they were fighting and we had a lot of.
Nighttime?
Yeah, this is about one o'clock in, in the morning. And there were a lot of seniors, people that just grew up out here that, you know, we're just not used to that. And it's not something we want to get used to. And so she sent me the video. So I have that video. But I think she said the police was called and they didn't take anybody yet. But it was a lot of videos.
Can you forward that to me?
I'm sorry, I will. I'll do that. I, I was seeing the call from a very angry man. And I tried to call him back three times. I noted the times I tried to call back, but he, his phone box, his box, email box or phone messages was full. I couldn't leave a message. I rode around the township and I wrote down some things that I, I thought that I could report to the sheriff department with the vehicles, with the four flat tires, which is on Polson. I'll give you that information. And there was a house on, ooh, Blairwood that has, it looks like somebody burnt the couch and took it and threw it out on the side of the house in between the neighbor driveway and theirs. And then they have trash that the bulk has not come to pick up. I did create a letter that I showed both trustees. And Trusty McGuire was supposed to update the letter to include two additional bulk pickups for the township. I haven't gotten the letter. I believe we need to start sending letters out and letting people know that if you don't abide by what the township sets down as our guidelines, that you're going to be fined. We have to start doing those things because if we don't, people are going to continue to just. We have to start doing those things because if we don't, people can continue to just trash the township.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully he gets the letter to me. If he doesn't, then I'll contact the city of Dayton and figure that out myself.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
You said over by Blairwood. So, is the school still intact over there? Is it still one school? Isn't there something that we can do for issues around the school district? Different things that are happening around the school district that makes it unsafe, makes it, makes it difficult for kids to travel back and forth. I mean, there are, there are a lot, there are a lot of stipulations around schools that you can't have, you know. We always think about like sex predators and things like that. But there's also a lot of other things around the school district that is not permissible. And you can check into that to see if you could use some of those, some of those codes or those, I can't remember exactly what they're called. Sorry. But, but there's definitely, there's definitely things that are not permitted in those areas, you know, you know, drug houses, people within so many, within so many miles. All kinds, all kinds of stuff. All kinds of things.
I'll, I'll look into it. And if you come across anything, please share it with us.
Sure.
I'll do that. I also got some, a couple of kids and they went out and picked up trash over off of Dirty, yeah, it was
London Road.
Just lots of trash. So, that was good activity for the kids in addition to keeping the township looking better. Though, I think, oh, I wanted to, I think you told me about this. It's a stop sign. Is it right here?
Some dirt and where the bus stop is. Where the, there used to be the Lee Brothers, whatever.
You're talking about the little turnaround for the bus.
By Speedway, by, oh, the, whatever that's,
Iona, Iona, there are Ions, Iona.
Iona.
There's no stop sign there going up the dirt.
Thank you for choosing to.
That'd be a county, that'd be a county. City, I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, you can do that. Okay, yeah. People have been running the, they don't know the stop.
Right.
At a 4.
They run it anyway. There's never any stop sign.
So, there was some other things I do. I did mention about the emergency, the sirens over on Kimmel Lane, so you would know that area. And I got the positions posted on the website. I slowly getting those filled. And that's pretty much.
Any questions, any comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Lydon, who's name?
I'm getting there.
Okay, okay.
Going to rally 246 Southside enough.